Saying that one was our.
Looks like we're ready to roll. I'll call to order the January meeting of the Devils Lake Water Improvement District Board of Directors. And I see we have a roll call on there for the. Let me just say it's pretty obvious that all five board members are present. Consent agenda. Anyone have anything they want to remove from the consent agenda? Have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Comments from citizens present on either agenda or non-agenda items? All right, we'll move on to unfinished business, Devils Lake Plan. Septic and sewer. Paul, why don't you take the first part of that?
Sure, yeah, just waiting for feedback from the city and the county on the buildable lands inventory for the drainages of Devils Lake, subject to a potential urban growth management agreement between the two. And then I think more importantly is, you know, I've inquired recently about when we might expect an ordinance, draft ordinance from, for a septic ordinance. Haven't heard back on that. I'm actually, would like to really see that process move forward. You know, I think with the grass carp issue coming forward, you know, having a septic's ordinance in place, you know, really demonstrates to certainly Fish and Wildlife and to the rest of the world that, you know, we're serious about this larger Devils Lake plan. And so, you know, I think anything we can do to keep moving that forward, you know, by, you know, contacting the city, talking to the mayor, what have you, about that process is advantageous because I really feel that, you know, beyond it being of good value, obviously, to do it without any other reason besides, you know, the value of itself, with that grass carp application out there, I think it really behooves us to see that through in the near term, so just leave it to that.
Okay, and do we have any further word on our meeting with the city attorney and the county attorney regarding the searing of the lake?
No, yeah, no, I haven't gotten any minutes back on that either.
Yeah, I mean, where that was left was we were supposed to get a summary of the meeting from the city attorney and we haven't seen that yet, right?
Correct.
Okay. Voyage LID, I can report that the, well, I shouldn't say that the engineers completed the design, but I've seen design drawings, including kind of a cover drawing that I don't think he could have done without having completed the drawings. And then what I did see was quite detailed and beautiful, and so it looks to me like the design phase is either complete or almost complete, so it again looks to me like the sewer LID is moving fast enough to be able to get it completed, get the construction completed in August of this year, which is the target. Okay, so Save Our Shoreline, East Devils Lake State Park project.
Okay, so I met with Katie Duzick from the Natural, she's a natural resource specialist for the parks, I guess that was yesterday. She's going to talk to the parks ranger, he's been on vacation or something the last couple of weeks, so, but we talked about it, she feels like she'll be able to talk him into not only the project, but the same parameters that we spoke about, about having two years worth of maintenance done either by the district or, as I'll talk about, by Taft High, and then turn it over to them. And so, you know, we don't have a clear yes on that, but she believes that that'll be something that she can obtain because that's basically what our previous agreement was. As far as the school district or Taft High School participating in the maintenance and watering, I've got a verbal on that from the counselor, Vicki Roller, so we're moving forward basically as projected. I've spoken with our lake contractor about what role he might play in excavation of that site. We may still have the parks be able to participate in that too, I don't know yet, we have to wait till the park ranger really gives feedback. They've only got a, like, a pretty small skeleton crew this kind of winter time, so I don't know if they'll be able to participate at all on the actual project implementation, but, so yeah, so that's going on quite well, and there's a little sketch there in your staff report of, as to where that would be. That's about it. The date of that event is, I guess maybe, I didn't put that in there, I believe it's February 20th, I think is the actual planting day. So we've got a bit of time, but, you know, it's coming together pretty well, I think.
All right, I know you have something to report on vegetation, Matt.
Yeah, so, you know, we submitted our packet to Fish and Wildlife on December 18th, which was a response to the questions that they, that were raised at their October 4th meeting of the commission. You know, that was drafted by Joe Ilers and Brian, I know you had some edits and I had some edits, and then added to that was a pretty detailed look at a number of different vegetation management strategies, many of which, well, all of which we've had evaluations of in the past. This was just more, some more detailed work into some of the numbers to show, you know, where these things are in a kind of cost benefit analysis overall. So that also is in their hands. You know, I would hope to hear back from them within the month, you know, maybe a target, but, you know, it's kind of in their court, so I would kind of just, you know, they're under their direction from their commission, and so to work with us, and so, you know, I feel like they've got what they need to for now, and then we'll see, you know, what, you know, I guess I'm leaving it in their court for now, and then they'll have to have time to review it and bring stuff forward to us, and so that's where it is.
All right, thank you, Paul. Communications report.
Okay, so I'm going to be on the radio station, KCH, second, is it, third Tuesday of the month, streaming live, government access channel four, social media, we talked about it in the last meeting where we have our YouTube channel up there as well. I guess a big one is the newsletter, which we released for our winter schedule, that went out to some 500, 600 people, I think, on our listserv. Forget how many people are signed up for that portion of it, but it is the major portion of the, most of people are signed up for that. There's an email link to that as well, they put in the packet, so if people didn't get a copy of that or want a copy of it, they can get it there. I think that's, oh, I was going to add a couple of things here, just of note, taking part with a program that the Sandwich Creek Watershed Council is putting together, it's educational outreach thing with the high school. They've asked me to basically be a half days' worth of demonstration of water quality stuff, and so that's happening on January 17th out at Crowley Creek, so it's a kind of a field trip with a class from the high school. And the other thing that just came up is they're holding a career day, and I believe that date is, I know it's in February, but they're going to have a career day for natural resource careers, not just generals, but natural resource careers. So we've been invited to participate in that, which will be at our new offices, so it'll be right down the hall from our current office at the community college in Lincoln City, so excited about that too.
Okay. Do we have a safety report?
Just a minor one, just to, you know, announce that we've updated our safety policy just slightly, and that was what our goal was for this cycle, was the safety policy, but I'm actually going to be putting together a larger safety manual in the coming months, which will be more robust than just, you know, a paragraph policy kind of thing, which is what we have and have had for some time.
Okay, Midhurst DL.
Yeah, no meetings since our last, so really nothing to update you on there.
East Devils Lake Road.
So, you know, the fish had, began running in early December, we haven't really seen any fish for the last, you know, since then. You know, potentially they're all in the lake and up the stream already, or with these rains, maybe we've seen some fish, we'll have to see. Typically, that run will start as early as Thanksgiving and run through, say, Valentine's Day, so it's a pretty wide window when those fish can come in and out of the, or up through the lake. So as far as the fish stranding issue, which we're contracted with Sandwich Creek Watershed Council to help facilitate, there's been no activity and thus expenditure. As far as the road itself goes, we haven't heard anything as far as any applications that have been coming forward, so maybe that'll be something we can check for, for next meeting, to see if there's any, anything that they have in the queue as far as grant opportunities for a more, a longer term fix than what was applied this summer. And I think we mentioned one time is that, you know, while it's nice to get the relief and there's, obviously it's considerably improved, it might not make us as competitive in those grant cycles too at the same time, because the urgency certainly is not as, you know, evident. So, you know, but like I said, it's, there's fish aren't getting stranded there, the road is mostly dry, which is, you know, a big priority for the county, and that's where it sits.
Okay. The policy updates.
Hey, I'd hope to have my copy of policies up on this laptop, but the, it's not working for me, so I'm going to go over to the other computer, just so I can see what's there.
Sure.
So the first one is the personnel policy and manual. Provided a draft of this, and it's based on Special District Association of Oregon sample policy, and it's shown here and it's on the web with additions and deletions. It's some 80 pages long, as you know, so it's certainly not something we're going to go through word by word here, unless you want to, and then we can do. But, you know, I think pertinent, pertinent things would be highlighted, and so I guess that's what I draw your attention to. Language about, you know, that this policy does not apply to independent contractors, something that I added there. The district has had a policy of providing workers' compensation insurance for volunteers, so that's kind of already in effect, and so I'm reflecting that in this document. Scrolling down here.
Do you want to throw it up so Don can see it?
Yeah, we can do that.
In case he's interested?
Yeah, he's going to put that on the screen. So wage compensation, there's just a section on wage policy there, which is a reflection of the district's existing stances on providing. Oh.
Just read, read the top line there, Brian, it gives you, it gives you the directions. You push like the first button and then start up the second one.
Yeah. Good for me.
Thanks.
Okay, so bits on issuing checks, you know, there were some kind of redundancies too and things here, so there's, that's not really a pertinent change. Mentioned wage compensation, this is just clarifying language, you know, deletion and addition, because it's the way it was, I don't feel like it's a good use of our time to have a maximum and minimum pay rate for positions that we don't have. So this is kind of some of the language that was taken out of there. And as, you know, workforce may change, then we'd approach that at that time. Regular employees' salaries will be reviewed after 12 months, that's kind of a projection of what we've done in the past, that would be kind of a board decision, but that's been your active kind of way of working.
It might be helpful to tell us if there's anything that's not, that's different from what's proposed in the SDAO.
Yeah, yeah, so one example of that would be overtime, I've put in here eight hours a day or 40 hours. I feel that that's the way I've been operating the district for interns and the like, I feel that's just fair to people because we don't really necessarily.
Well, what if, what if somebody, you know, like Seth wanted to work four tens?
Yeah.
I don't see.
That may be something that we should, we should edit that then, but if, I'm kind of looking at it, this is kind of that, your typical, you know, where you have, you work at 10-hour days because you're doing harmful agal blooms and work, and it's exhausting work, and then you end up maybe working in eight or seven or six the next day for that person, but I don't feel like, I don't want to punish somebody for having, you know, worked that time. In that other example, though, I think.
What's state law? I mean.
Well, 40 is state.
It's over 40, it doesn't have anything to do with how many hours you're working a day, right?
It's 40, yeah, I believe so. I mean, there may be an upper limit to the daily hours, too.
There is, I think so. Well, if it's not a salaried employee, if it's hourly.
If it's not, what's the deal with hourly wage employees as far as the state's concerned?
I think it is, you got to pay them more than, you got to pay them overtime after eight hours, and you got to also pay them overtime over 40 hours. That's what I understand it to be.
It's my understanding too, how they really do it.
Yeah, me too.
Well. Really, well, I'm not a specialist in that area, so I haven't looked at it for a long time, I just.
Last, last year I was corrected in, when I turned in minutes to the accountant, that I needed to pay a particular person the extra hour and a half he worked a nine and a half hour a day for whatever reason. So I don't know, but that's, that happened with me.
Well, I've put it, suggested that we just go to this eight hour 40, just because it's kind of, it's been how I've, you know, worked interns in the past.
And then you would change it if you got a Seth that wanted to work four tens?
Absolutely, yeah, and I think, David, you raise a good question, if you have an employee that comes on a, say, a four-day work week, then, maybe that's just the language we should add, this would not include.
You know, because I look at it, go, pay a person who wants to take the two hours comp time the next day, or, you know.
And there is comp time discussion, too.
Paul?
Yeah.
Can you check that out and see, I mean, just because we decide it so doesn't make it so.
Right, well.
A quick phone call to the employment department would answer that question.
Yeah, 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 and as a matter of policy, you could have, you could, you could pay someone at eight hours, you could pay someone at three hours if you wanted to, but that'd probably not typical, right? But I mean, as far as a policy change, you could still have it at eight, but I can, I can definitely check it out.
I could tell you this, if you're at the hospital, all the nurses work 12-hour shifts and they get straight pay per hour, they don't get time and a half after, after eight, so.
Yeah, and so that's kind of, I think, probably likes of what David was talking about, where you're on a, your contract, you're, you're working three 12s or something and F, or whatever it might be, or four tens is the typical. So for the, you know, for the intern, typically, you know, there's going to be like a Wednesday that's going to be, you know, 10, 10, 11 hours, you know, maybe a meeting night on a Thursday is long or what have you, so I've just been operating within that eight hours because I just felt, I feel it's just more fair, and that's kind of, that would be the position that I would, I would be advocating for, just, just as a.
Yeah, what I'm reading here just says that you're guaranteed overtime for over 40 hours.
From the state, yeah.
That's what it says here on the.
So we've answered that question?
Well, it's not, it's the minimum wage law.org website, so that's what it says for the state of Oregon, so, but make the phone call and see.
Okay.
I mean, I don't want to, I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, that we're in compliance with everything we need, so.
Okay, so this is one that, you know, is in this kind of sample draft, the Employee Assistance Program, and it's a board decision to offer that, I've left it in here to let you discuss that, but if you're not familiar with the Employee Assistance Programs, they're typically aimed at helping employees through, say, many crises such that their focus doesn't get lost, you know, for the workday. And when I spoke with special districts on this, one of the things that they mentioned was that, you know, typically people think of, you know, drugs and alcohol being the reason people call for Employee Assistance Program, which is a typical one, but they're also like, for, depending on the program that you might enlist in, they're also for, say, just like, you know, money stress or something, or, you know, grief relief, you know, because you've had a passing family member, just anything that's relative to employees' performance that's, you know, going to be short-term likely, and you're just providing a program to help, help them through that so that they can back on task. And so, you know, don't have a cost on this, it's fairly, generally pretty cheap, I understand, to provide these, it would just be potentially something you could offer, so if people have thoughts on this, if you have these yourselves with your own organizations, I don't know, I just, it's there.
There is a problem with making something like that part of a manual, is it, a written manual typically becomes part of the employment contract between employer and employee, and so, so you're sort of confirming a right to this benefit, and, you know, that means that now you're liable to provide it. And, you know, that's, so we need to be careful about what we're putting in the manual because you're really bound to provide it if you put it, if you, it's not elective, you know.
Right, right.
Particularly if it's not well-defined, then what are you obligating yourself to?
Yeah, and so with this one, it would, you know, as a draft here, you know, if you, before you adopted it, you'd either remove it or provide it, I guess would be the way to look at that.
So do we want to have that removed, or do?
I would say remove it, absolutely.
Is that consensus?
Not because you don't have a heart, you just don't know what you're opening yourself up to.
Well, so I guess, I mean.
You can, you can provide it, but you're not obligated to provide it in every instance, and I.
Well, what it is, is an insurance policy that you would have. So you would have, if you were to provide it, it would be, it would cost you some money, you know, I don't know if it's $25 a month or something on that order, and it's just available through that vendor for the employees to call. And typically, they're cheap because they don't get utilized very often, is what I understand. So, you know, to provide it would be basically, you know, a couple of phone calls and, you know, with direction, okay, so we have this program, we provide it, we, we say that it's part of the manual. If we don't want to research that any further, we can delete it right now, I guess is where it sits. But I, but it's, this is a draft, this is a draft policy. With that one, and that's probably the only other one that's a board decision type item here, you know, if you decided to remove it, you could do, and you could probably adopt this tonight, but it was my estimation that I'd get your feedback, I didn't cost it out for you because it didn't make sense to you without knowing what your kind of guttural feel was on that. So to my understanding, it's a pretty inexpensive thing.
Does it specifically say there, I didn't see it, that.
So the objective is to assist and retain valuable employees and reduce the potential of difficulty in the workforce stemming from employees' needs and difficulties, which otherwise not, may not be addressed. Problems of a personal nature can adversely affect performance. Basically, it just provides a referral service, you know, it's often to a counselor or a resource person, that's, that's what it is, it's nothing.
Does it say that the cost of this, that what's provided to the employee is that which is covered by an insurance policy and nothing else?
If you look at the last sentence in the paragraph, it says that if it's not covered by insurance, the insurance policy, that's their responsibility.
Right.
Okay.
Employees' responsibility of the district.
So basically, if you provided this, you would have another, you would have this program, it would cost you some money. The program could be pretty bare bones, or it could be a little bit higher end. The bare bones ones may provide maybe eight hours of counseling service to an employee or something, one time per annual or something. And then after that, if they needed a ninth hour, then they would pay for it out of pocket. That's how I understand them. I've not really got much experience with these, so.
This basically would say the district would pay the policy for the individual, or is it a policy, an umbrella policy for the district and any employee in the district?
It would be for, an umbrella policy for all employees in the district.
All right.
Yeah, and so it would be based on your number of employees, your risk associated with having five people use it, or one person use it, or 500 people use it, or what have you, so.
It sounds to me if it's not used very much, then it may not very much be needed.
Well, yeah, it's, that's the reason the insurance pool keeps the rates down, so in the case where your employee would use it, they would be using it at the expense of other people that were pooled in that, you know, just like any insurance.
It just seems to me, Paul, you get insurance for things that you can't, you don't want to, you can't afford, right?
Right.
Your house burns down, you don't have the money to write a check to replace it, or maybe you do, but.
Yeah, I don't. I can't afford.
You better not. And this sounds to me like a way an insurance company's making money.
Yeah.
Or paying something that if you wanted to, you could ea, we could easily afford to pay for it, if somebody, you know.
Well, before we make a decision, why don't we, why don't you see what the premium is and maybe get a sample policy and see what it covers?
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I, my perception is we're not, I didn't have time to read this whole thing, and let alone the other.
Yeah, that's.
The other manuals that.
Three or four.
That are up for review in the last eight days, which I think is about, how long have you had this?
Yeah.
And so I'm assuming we're not making decisions on. And so I'm assuming we're not making decisions on everything tonight, so we don't have to make a decision. Unless, you know, anybody finds, sees something that you just want, we want to get it out now, but other than that, we don't have to act on that tonight.
How much trouble you have to go to, to get the information?
I mean, I've talked to special districts once, they gave me a contact number, I didn't go further to ask what that insurance company might provide. Could be, you know, an hour's work.
My preference would be to take it out now. I would be delighted to make a decision now.
Does anybody want to keep it in?
I make a motion to take it out, I'd say.
I don't think we need a motion, but.
To get it to the.
Motion always works, though. Alright, is there further discussion? All those in favor of Noel's motion? Say aye.
My motion, aye.
Aye.
Kip's motion?
I still have a pardon.
I only heard one aye.
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 Uh, no, I don't see any reason that we have to take that right now, but, okay. Motion carries, four to one.
So, okay, so this is basically travel stuff, must be pre-approved by, so, the lake manager shall authorize registration, travel, attendance expenditure in advance with budgeted amounts adopted by the board, so that's, anything that's beyond what's in your budget would be, need additional board approval, that's all that says. And must be first approved by lake manager, so don't waste your time with, say, if you had another employee that wanted to go to training, if you had money in your budget and you had already kind of had a policy to provide that, then they would go, if it was cleared with the lake manager. If it was beyond the scope of that, then they'd have to clear it through the lake manager and then clear it through you, so that's what that says. Zip code error from Google Earth, okay. Meals, so, you know, this is an old document, so $40 per day is the per diem rate that we've been using.
So I have a question about that.
Sure.
You know, I, when I travel, it's variable rates based on where you're going. And I don't know where my company personally gets them from, but they, I know, you know, personally traveling to San Diego is very different cost from traveling to Newport for the day. Right, in terms of how much it costs, you know, to go, so I would just ask if anybody who's interested in trying to find some kind of, you know, published, you know, I mean, we could go to the state and see what the state of Oregon uses for, you know, employees traveling in different areas and have a variable per diem rate based on something, if there's a standard out there somewhere, I don't know.
Good question.
Because, you know, I don't want to make sure, you know, I want to make sure you have enough.
Yeah, yeah, in New York City or something, you know, big city, you're not going to buy three meals for $40, but, you know, that's kind of the thing, right?
Generally.
We could look at that.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, it would save us from having to make per diem decisions every time we, you know, send Paul to a conference or something.
Somebody's done that homework.
Yeah.
Consumer price index for cities or something.
So would you just want to put that language in here now and call it good, because, I mean, we could find out and then, or we could just do it now, do something kind of like you're suggesting of.
If you wanted to change the language, maybe just have a published, you know, a board, you know, approved, you know, per diem rate for, you know, various cities or whatever, right? You could present, you know, if you could put language in there and say, you present the board with, here's the rates for the current fiscal year for going to these places, you know, for the following places, and we could just say that's your, you know, your per diem rate card for the year or whatever, if we needed to. Or whatever, I don't know. I just, I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, it's a good point.
That you're properly covered when you travel.
Yeah, you won't know it in advance, but there's some way to look up and see what the different prices are. Lunch in Minnesota.
You know, you could just say, you could say that meals will be covered by a per diem rate established based on the travel, you know, the travel destination.
Oh, that would be.
Yeah, estimated expenses.
That'd be, you know, does that sound good? I mean, that's a good, that's good language, from what I'm hearing. It works for me, I.
Yeah, except we got to approve it every time we go somewhere. I mean, I almost wonder why we don't just leave it like it is, and if you want more, come and say, look, I'm going to a place where, I'm going to New York City and it costs more, so why don't you allow me more for this particular trip?
However you want to do it, it's fine.
Yeah, I'm in for simplicity, so, and that's the other thing about this, you don't want to have to review it all the time. I mean, you know, your policies you should be reviewing annually, and to review them all the way to, you know, oh, it said $40 in there and, you know, 2016, we should have had it at 45, that's kind of a lot of work to go at it.
That's why I was just saying, if there was a consumer price index for, that you could just say, we're going to base our per diem rates based on this, you know, known published entity, then, you know, we're done.
Yeah.
What's reasonable in the area that you.
Yeah. How about a per diem rate based on, based on current costs associated with the destination? How's that? Just call it good.
I mean, you could use the GSA schedule, I mean, they publish out per diem rates.
I'm happy to do whatever you have, I mean, just.
Just base it on, base it on GSA established.
That's good.
Per diem rates, right?
Based on.
Yeah.
Government, GSA.
Services Administration.
General.
Yeah, or General Services, whatever.
GSA, whatever, however you want to define it.
Yeah.
Yeah, because then you can just enter the city and the zip code and it gives you the per diem rate, right there.
Awesome. GSA established rates.
Yeah.
By destination. Okay.
And take out the second per day in that first sentence, it's redundant. Per diem rate, so it's.
Oh.
Per day.
Four, okay. There, okay. Added internet as a, this kind of shows you the dating of this draft document, so telephone, fax, email, and internet services. Vacation, you do that by contract, but there was also in this draft document, language associated with accumulation, so if you had, if you wanted that in there for people that come on that are maybe short term, I just leave that in there. I think it's a pretty comparable way of accruing. There's your holiday schedule, existing holiday schedule. It's based on the federal schedule. Comp time is shown here, basically right from the SDAO, it provides one and a half hours per hour, I think it is, is how that works. Sick leave, just notification of, you know, how to get ahold of the district, making a little clarity there. And then only, you know, added, except in the case of emergency, they need to tell me if they leave. I thought that was kind of an obvious admission on that draft. Leave, jury duty, uniform leave, so a lot of these things, you know, we haven't really considered, and so I think it's really good that we're doing this now because if the district has uniformed service members, they need to be provided the leave and opportunities associated with reemployment, so.
Yeah, I think the right way to do this might be for us to have another month to review it and then just come back and say, look, we, people can just bring up the parts that they want to change from your draft, rather than just going through it section by section. We're on page 25 of 100 right now.
Yep, pretty close, right? So, I mean, that's kind of what I was thinking, anticipating to you, just as a better way of, but this is introduction, like, we went through a few things and let's.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're trying to do. I'm just saying, let's take another month to look at it and with the understanding that we can, you know, more efficiently and probably do a higher quality job of going through this after we've, I mean, maybe everybody else has read it, but I didn't have a chance to read this and the other policy manuals, other than
Yeah.
Doing a scan, it's even faster than this.
So, yeah, I mean, I would, I think that'd be a good way to move these forward. Is there any other thoughts, or? I did try to remove all the notification of format changes, but this got caught in there, because there was a lot of blue and red, you know, scratch outs and things like that, but, so, yeah, so this is available for you and for anyone else that want to comment on this, and I think we'll just move on to the next one, if that makes sense.
This is the personnel policy you're doing, right?
Yeah.
Down in the public records request section, you might want to modify, at the end of that section, you have the name, address, PO box, and you have the physical address, Bill got the old address.
Oh, okay.
Update that.
Okay.
Minor bit.
Is that in the records policy portion?
Public records request section, it was at the end of.
Oh, okay, so that's in, that's not in this, this is personnel policy, that's in the
It's in the other.
Existing board duties, yeah, draft, so we'll get to that, yeah, okay. Okay, I'm going to close this.
Yeah, I like the format, I just, so it does make it easier to review, I think. You don't have to look at everything that's been lined out, I don't think. I'm interested in what's not lined out, although.
So the next one is a safety policy, which is actually in the larger board duties and responsibilities, we'll skip that, go to the financial manual, which you had a review of last time, I provided the marked up, re-marked up version there.
I see you made the vice chair change, so.
Yes.
I think that was the one major thing that we were concerned about from a separation of duties perspective on the accounts, so.
This begs a little discussion in light of some, in light of the audit again here, and some discussions I've had with your payroll specialist about potentially having her or put it out to bid for, you know, in the fall, maybe in the subsequent fiscal year. But to have somebody actually just do that financial report for you, instead of having your manager do it, we've talked about that in the past, there's some benefits to having me do it. My eyes are a little closer to what that, how that categorization of the expenses are, but over time, I think, you know, somebody else can pick that up. The benefit of having someone else do it is that separation issue, and having them, having additional eyes on there. But more so is, you know, you're paying, you could be paying skilled labor for hours worked that are required to get the financials done, or you could be paying, you know, experienced but not trained skilled labor, referring to myself, say with the QuickBooks and that sort of thing. As good as I am, I'm not certainly great, I don't pretend to be, and so when it comes time to do the audit and, you know, our payroll specialist comes in and, you know, helps make sure that everything's correct, I think we'd save time and money if we just had that person doing that all along. It's always difficult to get that person up to speed again, if there's something kind of anomalous, like, okay, that's why, and so if that person, we didn't have to spend an hour or two just to, you know, sussing out what's going on, and they were just having, had done that, I think it would make sense. I think overall, you'd have a, you'd have better financial reports be the key. They would be more readily connected to your audit, which is ideal, and and I don't think it's going to, would cost too much more. You know, because you're paying somebody to do it anyhow, you're paying through salary. So it's just something to consider. I thought I'd maybe bring that back to you.
Yeah, but.
February, so that's why, I'm just mentioning it now, because I, it's a pertinent potential change in the way that this operates, and I think it could provide some benefit.
Yeah, but the way it's worded here, it just says monthly financial reports are generated for the board. It doesn't necessarily say the lake manager does that.
Okay, there, but, and I guess I would probably want it to say where and who, if that were to be, become a change, so. Before adopting this, unless you adopt it and then come back and make a decision, it just, it just seems like there might be, it's just some discussions I've had over the last couple of weeks. And so I, certainly having finished the audit and seen where we are, it just seems like it might be something that you might want to consider.
Well, at this point, you do the financial report, right? And does anybody else have a hand in it?
No.
So doesn't that mean then that 12 additional times for 12 months, somebody, you'd have to pay them professional prices to do a financial report, right?
Right, but you would save, you would save the time, the hours that are associated with me doing it.
Yeah.
So that would be the swap, and I think you'd be, you know, pretty well on par with, you know, a professional services associated with that versus a professional lake manager that's more concentrated on your other goals. So I don't, I don't know if you, I mean, your time, you would, it would cost you money, but it would be.
But you get a salary and they would be paid for their.
Yeah, and, you know, I've just had some discussions, and I've, you know, I've said that, you know, basically it takes me anywhere between two hours and eight hours to put out that document. Depends on, things go crazy and there's bad web service, or any number of different anomalies. And, you know, I think that that person thinks probably four to five hours might be a reasonable amount, and that's, that's doing, you know, basically your financial report and your, what am I trying to do, reconciliations and things like that. What I'm, what I'm hoping to do is to avoid, if we were to do that, would be to avoid, you know, having that person spend time saying, oh, yeah, there's a four cent discrepancy here. And it takes a lot of time and energy that we're both kind of looking over each other's shoulders to figure that out. And it's a really frustrating, frankly, bit of my job that is just like, I think would be.
So why don't you, just bring, I'd say bring a proposal to, you know, to us on what it's going to cost and.
That was going to be my goal.
Yeah, I mean, we can't make a decision without knowing what it's going to cost.
Follow it up with, it's bugging me on my mind when you're saying this. So is the budget next? Are you going to be asking for, you know, for additional kind of, you know, because I know the budget takes a lot of time to pull together.
Am I asking to have someone else do the budget? No.
You pull in all that together, is that something that we're going to be needing to look at, too?
No, I wouldn't recommend that.
He's got to do the budget, I mean.
Yeah, I just didn't know if, you know.
Yeah, no, that was one of the questions that she had, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
But the product that you're producing now, that you're doing, is accurate, is that correct?
It's, it's, I guess the language as identified by the auditor would be that it's of material, it's materially correct, there's nothing of material, you know.
There's no substantial inaccuracies.
Yeah, yeah, so it's.
So what we're getting from you is on target.
Yeah, absolutely.
You're not saying, I can't do this, I'm throwing numbers.
No, no, but, but there's quirky things that, with the way equity works and things like that, that is really not my bailiwick, and the way your reports come, they should more reflect what the auditor, you know, very dry look at that, and so I would think you'll benefit if you had to go with this. You're definitely getting accurate result of financials of, say, what you're asked to pay, what you're asked to, where, what monies you've spent. It just gets down to like, you know, a few pennies that we're like, say, a perfect example is like payroll. You know, she sends me a copy of the payroll, and then if, if I haven't used a saved transaction, and the saved transaction didn't match. and the saved transaction didn't match what was, came in because there was a three-cent change, you're gonna have like a three-cent, you know, inaccuracy that goes forward. And then it's just like, coming back to fix that. That's kind of what I'd like to see go away.
I agree that it would probably be an improvement in one or two ways, but I can only imagine that an accountant working four or five hours would be very costly.
Bookkeeper, yeah.
Just a bookkeeper?
Yeah, just a bookkeeper, yeah.
Okay, well, I don't know what they cost, so...
Her charges are pretty reasonable right now, as if we're talking about the same person, right?
Yeah, we're paying thirty-five bucks an hour.
Oh, well, it's...
Yeah. So, it's, and that's where I get at, kind of like, your salaried person, well, whatever that hourly might equate to is on par in that realm, it's not like, so you're, and, and I guess this is, this is the big thing. It's like when, when like, you know, we found it in the office and we've, we always budget a little bit of money to, to above just the payroll. If you look at our budget, it's like, you know, maybe there's three to five hundred dollars kind of buffer in there over just what it costs to do payroll. And so, that money's already being spent anyhow. Plus, you're spending money, time, to have done the product originally and to kind of be, kind of oversight to try to, to, you know, to figure out where this, like, two cents is coming from, you know? There's like fifty dollars hanging there, and if someone that's done it, you know, a very trained person has done it, those, I think, issues will dissipate. That's, that's kind of, that's where I'm thinking, so...
So, you'd ask for a proposal to do payroll and the monthly financial report altogether? Let me just get that in one proposal.
Yep. Okay, so that's...
That was off your plate, you would have additional time to do other things.
Absolutely.
You just wouldn't, like, start watching soaps?
Yeah, I don't like soaps, but, yeah, right, Breaking Bad or something.
Breaking Bad Marathon.
Right, exactly, we just, it would change the hours use of your salaried hours. Okay. So, moving forward on this one? David, do you want to just look at maybe adopting it? Because like you said, it's not...
I was, I was gonna make a motion that we go ahead and adopt it, you know, as proposed.
Did you just do that?
I did. And we have a second. I look at it this way, I guess we're in discussion mode now.
We're in discussion mode.
If we do make a change to have an external entity do that, we can always, you know, we can always make an addendum to this, right?
Well, I think as written, I don't think we even need to...
Or we don't even need to, because it doesn't specify we have, or we don't have, so...
Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So, that's the, we have records policy?
Financial manual.
No, I mean, we're on the, yeah, we just approved the financial manual, right?
Yep, yep, and so on the...
Records policy?
Yep, and officially labeled record retention and destruction policy, which seems a bit crude, but it's really what the state calls it, because record retention actually calls for destruction of records, too, that are outdated and are to be destroyed. Certainly, you know, say, like, personnel records that you were not supposed to hold beyond, say, a year of a background check or things like that, so that's why that's in there. This is pretty much boilerplate from the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants with Oregon's, from the State of Oregon Secretary of State's Office, the actual O.R.A., which is Oregon Administrative Rules, is that right? That actually lay out the record retention schedules, which if they change, then by just referencing that, you don't have to change your policy. And that's right there, that link, that hot link. I did, though, because of, to make it easier, because I had to look at that retention schedule, I added the document type based on the names associated with that, from that archived link that are typical for the district, such that for, you know, for ninety-nine percent of the cases, you can look right here and see if we're on track for retaining or destroying a record. And, you know, so this is very helpful, because, you know, we did basically cull some old records, financial records, for instance, that, with our move, so we didn't, we're not packing a bunch of old receipts from nineteen seventy or eighty-five or whatever. So, these are right here, and, you know, this one, I think, is pretty clean, and I recommend you just adopt this one as drafted here, too. I think it's, it's pretty much ready, I would just clean it up with adding your logo and have it go.
And my only challenge with it is, is, you know, referencing, you know, if we have... I guess if we're doing this on an annual basis, we can always update the hardcoded.
Yes, yeah, yeah, well, and actually, it says in there that you have to reference the Secretary of State's Office.
Yeah.
That's part of the policy. I just did it because I, frankly, I kind of wanted to see it so I could... It's kind of, and it's also kind of, I think, an educational thing, because there's so much to weed through to... I mean, it's, you know, twenty pages long, the record retention schedule, I mean, it's ridiculous. So, but it is stated in here that, you know, you do have to make sure that it's current. But it provides, and that's what I was kind of getting at, it provides the language to go in the section of, to go find it.
All right, so I'll move that we adopt the records policy as drafted as of December twenty-six, two thousand thirteen?
A second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Records policy is adopted. Next one is board duties and responsibilities.
I might have to go online to grab this one, I don't know if I... Oh, no, this is it here, I believe. Yeah, okay, and so this is the one that has, basically, all your previously adopted policies are in here, and then there's just, this is a review of that whole thing.
This is the hundred-and-fifty pager, isn't it?
This is, eh, it's a long one.
This is the fifty-one, okay.
It's a fifty-two pager, yeah.
Personnel policies, I think, is...
Personnel policy is a hundred, almost, pages, yeah. So, yeah, there's just some additions here on that first page relative to renaming it Procedures and Policy Manual, and then just one other objective, provide consolidated resource for legal construct of the district, just because it's in here, so I added that. Formative changes here. A thing really relative, I made some changes relative to the title of my position throughout, to be consistent with what your contract states. I've made an addition here, it says, "In my contract," or in the manager's contract, and then also in your policies, existing policy statement, it states that you're expected to attend seminars and conferences which benefit the district, which I've added here. I'm trying to streamline, because I, frankly, I feel like, you know, if, if, if we're gonna spend, have your manager spend three to four hours documenting why they should go to this, the Oregon Lake Association meeting, and then the North American Lake Association meeting, and then bring that to you and spend an hour in this meeting, if, unless that's your priority, I think it's just time not well spent. So, that's why that suggestion changes in there.
Which...
What does that say?
Which page is that on?
I'll find it for you, hang on.
Exactly.
It's four-point-one-two, page nine.
Page nine.
Of the document.
I don't remember what that, can you go back and, what is that? These include but are not limited to the North American Lake Management Society and...
And the Oregon Lake Association Annual Meetings.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I expect a report.
Right.
We're not, I mean, you seem to be worrying about having to justify why you went.
Yeah, it seems, to me, it seems like a...
I never thought you had to do that, but, I mean, we wouldn't send you unless we thought it was, it was, you, we had a good reason to do that.
Yeah, that's why I'm thinking. I'm just, I put it in there because it's, you know, it says in the policy and it says in your contract that you're not supposed to go do these things. And then, this, these are the two that we typically go to and have gone to since, probably since the nineties.
Do we go to both of them every year?
Yeah.
We do?
Yeah. So, I'm just trying to, you know, it is a, it's a policy thing, if you wanted it in there, you could leave it in there or not. I just, I'm just trying to make use of this time to streamline other hours. Because, you know, if it's something that you're comfortable with, and you seem to have always been, then if you had it in your policy, then you wouldn't have to spend, like I said, three to four hours of prep time, plus, you know, twenty minutes in your meetings each year. It just, there's, there's four hours of your staff time you just save, you know? So, that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I'm just kind of asking myself, is there an easier way to say it than to specifically call out the two conferences? Be more of a, you know, two-week approach, so that if there was something that you wanted to do other than NOMs, I'd go to the small district conference, you know? Would you want some flexibility in being able to do that?
Well, it's provided by stating included, these include but are not limited to you.
Yeah, I don't see that that's limiting him to those two.
Okay, well...
And if it were, you know, I guess the substantive difference...
I guess the question in my mind is, how broad do you make it? The way it is right now, you could go to ten conferences, because it's included but not limited to...
Well, it comes down to the budget resources that would be appropriated.
Yeah.
You'd have to be within a budgeted resources.
So, as long as, so, four-one-two, as long as you're within the budget for the fiscal year that we're in, you can go. That's what, that's what you're in essence.
Wasn't that already covered in the, in personnel, in the personnel policy?
To a degree, right, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have the definition for travel and per diem associated with this kind of stuff, so I was just, I was just wondering where the, you know, the measure of how many conferences do you go to? And in essence, what you're telling me is the budget bucket, the bucket that we put into the, for this type of stuff is what, what's gonna be the limiting factor.
Yeah.
You go over the budget, then you have to come for us.
Then you have to go get re-appropriated, right?
Yeah, I'm okay, I guess.
I think we can get through this pretty quickly, find any other changes that are substantive. So, I added a section, Article eleven, Ethics and Conflicts of Interest. This is boilerplate language that I pulled, in fact, it's probably a little too boilerplate. It's probably not the best language for your policy, because it's, it's, but I didn't want to change it because somebody else has gone to some, you know, good effort to provide that. But it just talks about the conflict of interest. Then...
I didn't have a chance to reveal all that, is that lifted straight from the SDAO?
You know, I'd have to double-check, let me see if I made a reference to it at the beginning here. I'm assuming yes, maybe I've got a comment on here, if I've added it.
Comment says from the, it's from the Small Districts Association.
Okay, thank you.
Right up at the headline, Article eleven, right? That's where you're at.
Yeah, yep, yep, thank you, yep, from SDAO Board Duties and Responsibilities, yeah, right. So, and I've added it, I think it's, it just provides nice clarity for it, as far as in the board policy. Let's see here, I can have any changes here, this is all O.R.S. Going fast now, okay, mission statement, no changes of that. Current goals, they're current as of today, from your website. Vote policy, I just added lake manager, so the district manager again. That's the same, no change there. Same thing here, just lake manager versus district manager. Safety policy, just added, "Aspects of the district's safety efforts include the hazard communication policy, employee training schedule, hazard chemical list, immaterial safety data sheets." These are things that we already have, and what I'm gonna do is, with the safety manual, is put that all in one place. So, I just added that to give us some credit for stuff that we've already done. Smoke-free policy, standard operating procedure, same thing there. Public records request, this is the one that Randy, I think you were talking about, we've got it out here. This right here needs to be, yeah. Yeah, I'll make that change. That's, you know, policy that you spent time on last, you know, a couple of years ago now, adopting. Mandatory reported suspected child abuse policy was something adopted in May, and that's it. So, you know, these are, like I said, ninety-nine percent already adopted, with just the changes in red. So, with Randy's suggested and suggestion, I think this one might be something you could adopt, too. It seems pretty ready.
And that's just the address change at the bottom.
Yeah.
So, I wonder if Mr. Welton has a move?
Well, what I'm thinking is, I would, I don't have a problem with adopting it tonight, but I'd like to reserve the opportunity to review the ethics section. You know, I haven't, I just didn't have time, and I apologize for not having that time to listen.
Yeah, my opinion would be, if you haven't had a chance to review it and you're not comfortable with it, then there's no reason to adopt it tonight.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, but I don't, I'm not concerned one way or the other, I would just want to have an opportunity to review the...
You know, and frankly, I'd appreciate it if you did review it, because, like I said, I pulled the, from there, board responsibilities, but it's not really, you know, wasn't written, it's kind of like, what's the expression? Shoehorned in, you know? You know, so if you have a look at it and provide, you know, substantive language change that make it seem like it should, you know, be more included, I think that'd be great.
I mean, I just have to be tuned into that kind of stuff all the time, I'm always looking at it and I can... If I just have a chance to read it, I can quickly come up with either good, bad, or indifferent, so...
I think that'd be great, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, MSDS is postponed until any 2014 changes. Employee training, that has been added to the personnel policy, I mentioned the safety manual's forthcoming. And light duty return to work is included in the personnel policy. And then investment policy is a new business item. This, this, this investment policy wasn't on this list of to-do until December, where I added it and have a draft for you. It actually comes up at the end of the meeting, but if you want to take a look at it now, might make sense to do so. It's basically based on SDAO sample investment policy for local governments. This is just something that the auditor has called out, that we should have an investment policy. I'm pretty, pretty comfortable with this, with the exception of work that would be put on the treasurer or someone else to, if they're... Well, so basically, your investment policy is, you have the local government investment pool and you have TLC. And if you were to change that, then you'd want to have somebody administering those, that, that portfolio, I guess. You know, you may have enough money that you want to consider that. You don't get a good rate of return from the special, from the local government investment pool, it's like point-five percent. You know, if, if that's something you want to focus on, you know, I think... You know, if, if that's something you want to focus on, you know, I think, you know, there's, there's some opportunity to, to do that, but it's going to require work and time and expertise. So, uh, I guess that's, that's the big, big question mark in my mind based on this kind of, um, you know, draft, uh, you know, and I just call it out right here in the comment, you know, it's just increased duties of the investment officer, which is called out to be the treasurer. Or, you know, you could hire an investment officer. I, I don't honestly feel like that's something I'm qualified to be, be for you. To be weighing the value of investments and putting all that portfolio. It's not something that I would be comfortable taking on. So it is something that's called for in an investment policy though, so, I, I guess I don't know what, what your preference is and how to, what the, what the best way forward is on that. So I'm kind of opening that up. Please get discussion about it tonight so we can look at adopting something like this in the near future.
Is there opportunity to lose money if we did this?
Sure, you bet, yeah, there's always that opportunity, but your policy is structured on retaining capital. I mean, there's, and it's called out actually in the policy right at the beginning, that, uh, you know, your priority is interest rate risk, so you don't want to lose money on, on your principal. That's your primary objective. Secondary objective is access to the money, liquidity. And the third one is, is yield. So if you can make more money, that's great, but you don't do that at the risk of losing any money, for one. And don't lock up money for too long a time where you can't get access to it because that potentially could cost you money too. So those are the, and these are, this is what the state does, you know? These are the three things that guide their investment too, and that's.
Yeah, what does, what does the local government, local government investment pool invest in?
You know, that's, that's a good question. I, I don't have that answer for you specifically, uh, but it would be available. We could, you know, find that out. Government bonds, assumingly, very stable, you know, AAA investments or, you know, and, and again, this is why it's something that you don't want me doing. This is not my, I'm not a, I'm not, I don't have a degree in economics. You don't want me even, you know, weighing opinions on what's a AAA bond rating because that's just not something I've ever been trained in.
So the delegation of authority section that you have to the treasurer, what was that originally?
Originally, it was, it was granted to, and it was like a blank spot herein named the investment officer. So you're just.
So you could say an investment officer appointed by the board?
Yeah, you could, I suppose. Or hired, yeah.
Hired or appointed.
Yeah, right.
Because I don't know that.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a bigger responsibility.
For the same reasons that you would not personally feel qualified to take that role on, I would want to make sure that whoever did take that role on, you know, that, that was a focal point of their role. Not necessarily an add-on, right?
Yeah, I, I hear you.
But then on the other side, just because we have the investment policy, doesn't mean we have to change things and, and execute something differently, right?
Well, you know, depending on if you've delegated that to that person, you have that person, then they're delegated and they can do it. They can go start investing your money, but they have to provide a monthly report or quarterly, depending on how your policy is laid out. So, um, you know, when I've been looking at this and, you know, and it kind of gets that question you were raising, where is that money right now at local government investment pool? One thing that came to light to me is that, um, you know, in this draft is like, you're not supposed to just leave it in just one investment pool. That's like, that's where you stock some short-term money maybe, you know, a year's supply, but not say a 10-year supply or five-year supply because it, it doesn't give you that yield. Doesn't meet the other three objectives.
Well, no, but I mean, I assume that the local government investment pool invests in a, in a fairly wide range of conservative investments, so.
It's targeted on the interest rate risk. It's targeted like, 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 it's, because it's got all of these, you know, smaller entities' money in it, their, their, their focus is that, you know, don't lose the principal. So they're not really, you know, and they're providing the liquidity for us, but that's not really, so they have to, they have to provide liquidity too. So the yield becomes really, you know, not very important. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
But I do remember in the days when interest rates were higher, that their yield was, was pretty decent compared to.
It was upwards of, at least over 5%, you know, back about 2007. So we've, we've had some pretty good years and then since '08, it's been around 5%.
Well, I mean, I don't, if we, if we take it out of there and put it somewhere else, it seems like now we're into the business of hiring, really hiring an investment manager and we're paying that person fees. Um, I mean, even in the most conservative bonds, you know, and interest rates, you're not guaranteed, you're not absolutely guaranteed return of your principal because.
That's right.
I mean, interest rates go up, bond prices go down, and if you bought at the wrong price, you know, the whole pool can take a dive. So, I mean, the whole, I shouldn't use the term pool because I'm not referring to LGIP. I mean, the whole fund, the mutual fund, whatever it might be. So I'm a little bit at a loss to say, you know, we should start doing something much different than what we've been doing. Because it certainly doesn't take a lot of time and I think it is safe and it is, uh, the yield, I mean, at least it's not 0.1%, which is actually what you see in a lot of, from a lot of banks and stuff. You know, that is what I've seen lately, and you certainly have liquidity.
Five, five years ago, we could have had it in the greatest fund and, and lost half of our money.
Yeah.
I mean, the Oppenheimer, what was it, the college, the state college fund, Oppenheimer, I think, was running it.
I don't know.
That fell apart. I, I'm for safety than anything else.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's, I mean, by law, you have to be for safety first. It's, it's just also, and, and I, I'm not sure if it was in this document or something I was reading elsewhere, that it was actually that it was just calling out that you're not really even allowed to keep it all in that investment pool too. It's just kind of like, you know, that's your, that's one of the, in the mix, you know? So, you know, I'm frankly more comfortable with the LGIP. It's something we, we use, it's, the access is very controlled, um, you know, but, you know, I'm just reading these things and, and like I said, you know, it's an investment policy that's been called for out by the auditor, so I'm trying to get, develop one, the best one you can get and what's appropriate. And, um, so I was kind of going through a lot of information, but I do recall that specifically that was saying somewhere that you can't just leave it in a, in a local government investment pool. And so that was kind of confounding to me.
But what minimum, do you know what the minimum, the minimum match you have to take?
I do recall that, but it was just that, um, you know, it couldn't be exclusive, and I guess that's how you minimize additional risk is by not having it being held basically all in one basket, which it is, it's in all in one basket.
Well, could you, could you take a, a small portion of it and put it in, in some kind of a fund?
Yeah.
And satisfy the law?
Um, yeah, certainly, certainly you could do, assumingly. You know, this is a new kind of thing for me too, so I'm kind of working through this as we go, so.
Yeah, I think the thing that we need to remember is that, you know, these aren't our dollars we're trying to invest. These are our taxpayers that are paying into this fund. You know, and I don't know how, how that would go over very well as far as moving dollars out of a pool and trying to invest for a higher rate with our local constituents.
Yeah, you know, I mean, your, your primary objective is to not lose the principal and the LGIPs also is that primary goal. And so, you know, I think collectively, we're doing a good job of that. And, yeah, you know, kind of got me scratching my head, which really.
Well, I do know this, I mean, we, we haven't lost a dime of principal in 30 years of existence and, you know, there've been some difficult economic times and, and, you know, other funds have lost. And so I'm not a, I mean, I'd like to see, I guess I'd like to see the language you're looking at when saying that it's being suggested that we not keep all our money in the local government investment pool because it certainly has provided safety and liquidity and, you know, not too bad a yield compared to what else is out there that has the same level of safety and liquidity. But anyway, you know, we're talking about what, we're, we're just talking about a policy here and not act, the actual investment vehicles, so maybe we're getting a little bit far afield for this discussion. You know, I doubt that we're going to be, that the treasurer on his own is going to be moving money out of the LGIP to, you know, soybean futures, so, or something. Or, or, you know, and, and moving it anywhere. And, you know, so for lack of a, of a better term, I'm actually okay with leaving it at treasurer. I mean, unless we can, I mean, I don't think we can say that the, the, investment officer is the board, I mean, authority to manage the investment programs ran into the, I guess we could say the board. Here and that to refer to as the investment officer. Guess we could do that. So that the decision to shift, uh, you know, the, the cash that we have on hand would have to be made by the board, that, that sort of makes sense.
Yeah.
That sort of, it does make sense.
And then if that were to happen, then you'd have a mechanism for reporting on those changes, be they quarterly or monthly. You know, we don't bring you a copy of the interest rates for the last month, you know? We do report on it in the, say, the budget, so it's like annual report. It's just not been very exciting. It's been 0.5% like you were saying, so, um, yeah, so that could be a change. And then, you know, if there needs to be further action based on that decision, it would happen.
Well, I'll make a motion that we change the words treasurer in the draft to Board of Directors.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Right. That motion carries? Paul, is there any other issues for, well, again, we just have a draft here. You want to put, other than making that change, you want to put this off until next meeting?
Sure.
I mean, we've just seen this, what, today? This, that's the first time I saw it. Um, you know, I, I don't have.
I think it's good to, you know, vet these out in public a little bit to a degree and then come back and, and really dig through it too. And then, you know, like our, the financial manual, we had one, the first reading, if you will, and now we have a second in adoption. So this is, I think, a good first step.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not anxious to just be quickly making changes to something that's embedded by SDAO, but we, I think we still have to have a month to look at it or another meeting, anyway. But we'll do that. New business. Lincoln City Urban Renewal Discussion.
So I'll just, right at the gate, announce that, you know, again, my wife works for.
Conflict.
Yeah, conflict, conflict of interest who works for urban renewal. And so I have asked to just kind of, you know, be on the sidelines for this whole, any discussions you may have. I'm certainly willing and able to provide a letter or something if you wanted to direct me to do so. But even so much as that, if, if a board member were to take that on, I, I think that'd even be better, you know, in this kind of one instance. So if that was, so that's where I'll leave it.
Yeah, that's fine, why don't you just bow out for this topic and we'll... So I think everybody knows what's going on here, right? The legislature said that, I think the, the sunset date for urban renewal was, in there, in, in authorizing legislation, was that, was it 2014 sometime? And then the state legislature changed the, the rules to say that they could stay in existence until they had reached their maximum indebtedness, I think is the terminology. And our urban renewal agency is about $7 million short of their maximum indebtedness, which means they can essentially collect another $7 million. So instead of sunsetting this year and returning, and not collecting any more money from, from taxpayers and therefore leaving more money to other government entities, they would like to stay in business for as long as it takes to reach the, the 34 million, the 34 million threshold, and they're about at 27 million now. And so what they're, and I think they have the right to do this anyway, so I, I don't think you can underrate how important our approval is, but overly underrate anyway, how important. But anyway, um, they've asked us to comment on their plan to, uh, to, to stay in business basically and, and, and collect up to their maximum indebtedness, which they want to use primarily to refurbish infrastructure at the north end of town, which includes sewer lines, lift stations, and pump stations primarily. Obviously, this has, I think, quite a bit to do with the acquisition of the, the villages' property and, and their need for additional capacity, but, um, I think they had some needs up there anyway. So, and, um, we did ask and found out that if those improvements aren't made, that we may have a difficulty getting the lake sewered if we otherwise have the opportunity to do that. So I think that from our perspective and our jurisdiction and our goals, it's, it's important to keep that in mind. So, uh, I'm just, again, explaining what, uh, where, what they've come to as far, so their proposal is that instead of, um, you know, our levy increasing, if it increased by the full amount, we'd get about 27,000 more, I think, I guess, starting July of '14. And they want to do an 80-20 split where they take 20% of that and we get 80%. And so our increase would be around 21,000 instead of 27,000. And, uh, and that's, that's, that's how their proposal would hit the, their governmental entities as well. I guess they want some comment from us about their, regarding their plan.
And why do they want our comment? Why, why is that of any importance to them? Just because of the money that we would be foregoing?
Yeah, I guess.
No, I'm sorry, I said that it apparently will affect. I asked specifically, asked Director Olson if the infrastructure capacity that presently exists would inhibit our ability to sewer the lake. And he gave. our ability to sewer the lake, and, um, he gave a pretty detailed answer, the bottom line being, yes, it would.
So, I, my understanding, Kip, was is that if the villages was to be developed, that pump station, basically down by Blue Heron, and the sewer line, two miles worth sewer line, can't take all of that development, which then, if it can't take that development, there's no way it could also take the sewer from the north end of the Yatsu area.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
So, is that way, is that your way of saying that the, the increasing in the capacity is a good thing by the city? I mean, 'cause ultimately, the urban renewal turns it over to the city, and it becomes city infrastructure, and the city has the ability to provide those services, right?
Going through a whole new, uh...
Ah, yeah.
Well, but, but, I mean, yeah...
I, I understand, you're saying, why develop a new area when you haven't, when you haven't taken care, you haven't finished taking care of what you already have?
Yeah, we...
Right.
Well, yeah, I...
You know, one of the things that I, you know, that, that kind of, you know, I haven't been involved in the urban renewal stuff until they came to, you know, to talk to us, but, you know, I don't know how they prioritize their projects or, or what they do to determine which ones they're gonna take on, um, you know, personally, I wanna make, I would, you know, I like the fact that they're doing a project that is beneficial and ties into, you know, part of our mission, right, and part of the things that we're trying to accomplish with this last push to, um, you know, to achieve maximum indebtedness, right, which, you know, personally, I don't know that I agree with, you know, the fact that, you know, you, just 'cause you have the ability to spend another seven million, should you, right? The question isn't for me to ask, because they're gonna take it from us, and they have the ability, that's fine.
Right.
Um, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's my place to say, no, you can't do that, but, um, I'm glad to see the project that they do wanna do is positive alignment with what, what, what our mission is, right?
I, I don't feed the kids overseas, if I haven't fed my own children, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, but, but the reality...
My first obligation is to the, the lake and the, and the welfare of the lake, and anything that goes against that, I'm against, period.
Well, I mean, yeah, but the reality is that the villages have been acquired, um, in order for them to realize their economic goals with respect to the villages, they gotta have the infrastructure. And now that they have been acquired, I mean, we could easily be aced out of the, the infrastructure required to sewer the lake unless the money's made available to make, to, uh, to let that infrastructure be improved and upgraded to the point where it can handle both the villages and other development at the north end of town and searing the lake. So I, I mean, it's, I guess, it just comes down to me, a simple decision, do we wanna maintain the, um, the capability to, an opportunity to sewer the lake, or don't we? You know, I mean, I, I don't know, I think, I think it really does boil down to that.
Well, I guess my understanding of the whole situation is they have the right to continue to exist as an organization, they're an overtaxing district, and whether they choose to be three years left in their life, or seven, is up to them, and they'll continue to skim off the top of the, you know, subservient taxing districts in the area, which we are one of. Um, I don't think, I don't think that the continuation is going to, you know, affect us in terms of, you know, are we not gonna be able to do what we wanna do because we're getting twenty-one thousand instead of twenty-seven thousand more a year, right? I don't see it as a huge negative, it's not like we're, um, it's gonna affect our budget in terms of the projects that we have in our, in our current, you know, timelines. It's not like, you know, we're buying lots of equipment like fire districts would be doing with, with that money or whatever the case is, so. It's, ultimately, I, I don't know if it's a, a good thing or a bad thing to write a letter of support, you know? If we were gonna write a letter of support, I would say that I would focus it around the fact that their current goal and reason for continuation is in support of something that can be beneficial to our mission. Okay? And that's making sure they have the sewer capacity to go ahead and enable us to, you know, continue to push sewer around the lake to clean up the watershed more.
Well, by doing this, they, they get, how much do they, um, well, they realize over time?
Seven million.
Seven million, and that means seven million that's spent on that and not, on, not on other things, I mean, half a million, uh, six hundred thousand a year between all the different things that the money would go, that will go instead, development of, up north, city itself, I mean, the city won't have the hundred and seventy-one thousand it would have otherwise, they could spend on, on searing or what have you. Well, I know how I'd vote if we...
If we had a choice?
Yeah. Me.
Well, they are having a meeting, and you can go provide personal comment in about two weeks, I think on the twenty-seventh.
My understanding could easily be faulty or incomplete, you know?
Yeah.
Just, you know, I think things in real basic ways there, they're going to sewer over the hill, and I'm saying, well, what about what's here that's not sewered? You're gonna do big projects, sewer around the lake.
I think, I think, uh, you know, it's been mentioned many times that, you know, searing systems are, as far as the city's, um, response is, usually is that, that infrastructure sewer is the developer's issue. A lot of areas have been developed around the lake without sewer, now you run into the problem, and now, you know, of course, now we have this fix in, uh, in the regatta ground area, but this being borne by the property owners. I think the city, well-known fact that the city doesn't feel like they're responsible for that. Just the way it is. So where does this leave us? I don't know. What's your take, Brian? Do you wanna do a...
Well, I mean, the, the ultimate, um, decision, I guess, is to, we write, do we do nothing, write a letter of support, write a letter of opposition, but I think that's the extent of it. Uh, we can hear collectively or individually at the, at the hearing, express our, express our views. Um, you know, I think another point that, um, should be made is that the, the city made that investment at, at the villages, um, with a, a, a high level of confidence that, um, the city would, um, gain substantially financially, and we, you know, we all have to hope and, and assume that, uh, money going into the city's coffers, uh, from that investment will ultimately, uh, improve our city, and, um, you know, they need that, that, those improvements in the infrastructure to leverage, basically, to leverage that investment and make it work for them, and so, uh, uh, it, it, it makes sense, and whether it'll pan out, you know, we, we don't know, but it doesn't seem like it's rocket science to realize that if they have the capability to develop and given the price that they, they paid for that, they ought to be, they should be able to make, uh, a lot of money at the same time, create a, a, a nice, um, environment up there that's beneficial to the whole city. You know, I think that's why this was, that's why this was done, this is, it was a pretty big deal, if you think about it, for...
Well, I'm, I'm not an expert in real estate development, and I don't know anyone on the city council that is, uh, a lot of money, a big chance, not my business, you know, don't have any say about it, but...
I hear you.
If I recall, they, they actually tried to, to buy it for quite a bit more, uh, a few years ago, and couldn't, couldn't get it done. Price kept coming down for various reasons and, uh...
Well, I guess I, you know, when, I just, I draw myself back to our mission, and, and I ask, you know, is there a project beneficial to our mission in the watershed, and if it is, and we wanna write a letter of support on those contexts, I'm okay with that. I, I don't feel it's our mission to write a letter of support for developing a piece of property.
No, I, I, I don't either, I didn't mean to say that, um, and I agree with you, we just look at the context of our mission, and everything is beneficial to us, um, then we do it, and we have the director say, you know, um...
And if the trunk line comes back and says, you can't do your sewer because we don't do this project, I don't wanna be in that spot, right?
Right. And they've, they've been very, you know, very specific about how, how they're gonna use the money, I mean, they, they're, um, the next page after, you know, they specify, uh, where it's going, and, and a lot of it is going to improvement of the sewer system.
But, you know, a few months ago, before they bought the property, it never came up that they, they couldn't possibly put a sewer in, and now it's like, we really need to look at this favorably, uh, if we wanna ever see a sewer on the lake, and I, that came from.
Well, that, I mean, I, he didn't tell me, he, they didn't volunteer that, I asked that question, and he said, actually, yeah, it would, because we're, you know, the, the capacity's limited up there for what, potential for development and, and, and the existing capacity, uh, don't match up, potential for development greatly exceeds existing capacity. So, you know...
I mean, the priorities got it, you know, when, when you look at the dollars and cents around it, not the human factor, right, not the environmental factor, you're gonna want the development, because development brings in more, right? You're gonna prioritize development over retrofitting other areas, right, 'cause retrofit's not gonna get you the, not gonna get you the coffers, you know, it's not gonna return on your investment, so. I, I see how we would end up as second if they had to make a choice of capacity in, in the current system. It's...
Yeah, that's, that's what I think.
So, I mean, I'm not saying I'm, I'm happy about it, but I'm glad that the project is gonna benefit us, the, the primary reason for this extension.
Well, you know, and sort of coming full circle, I, I mean, I just, it is a done deal, you know, I mean, they, they've already made the purchase, and now their priority's gonna be to max, you know, to maximize their investment, and without increased capacity, I, I see searing the lake becoming a secondary priority.
Well, be bad.
So do, do we want to, um, do a letter, uh, of support along the lines of David was suggesting, or do nothing, or tell them that we oppose their, their, the plan, or...
What are they asking for? Anything?
No, no, I, I think they just want to have, they're asking us for comment, so I'm, I'm gonna, I'm assuming that, I guess we're commenting right now, but, uh...
Well, I think we had a similar position regarding the annexation, uh, we made a comment, and, well, no one really cared, I could see.
Yeah, well, I mean, the comment that...
I mean, I, I, that I know, I'm certain of, 'cause I was there, and...
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't matter to me if we make a comment...
Yeah.
Because it, it is a done deal.
Our opinion doesn't count.
Uh, but if we do make a comment, I think it should be supporting that project that's, you know, gonna benefit our mission.
Uh, I, I would simply say that it's impossible for me to separate myself, uh, at this point on this issue from, uh, between being on this board and looking at it strictly as a board member, and how it would affect what we're, we're trying to accomplish, and being a member of the community, and being for or against what is being planned, uh, in the northern area, and so I wouldn't want to make a comment. I'd be the same way, Andy. Join you on that, no?
I think I would want to make a comment along the lines of what, that David has suggested, has sort of suggested, so I think we're informally two-for-two, and Randy's got the tiebreaker. No pressure.
No pressure.
Thanks for hiring, Randy.
Thanks for hiring.
Don't nobody care.
Thanks for...
Huge.
Well, as, as we do not have a vote on this issue, and it does not matter how we vote, so, how I opinion has no dollar effect on anybody, make that clear. You know, there's, you know, like, it's been talked about tonight, there's issues about this that I'm not so happy about, you know, we've been through septic sewer workshops for hours and never heard an issue of, of the capacity until, um, just started coming up about, you know, planning the development up north. So, yeah, we're kinda being put in second position, but, you know, in a way that kinda, I guess, kinda bothers me a little bit, but, you know, that's, that's my feelings, but, um, you know, I, I just wish this lake was important to a lot more people in the town, you know, then it seems like so, but, anyway, I'm, I'm kinda torn which way to go on this, but, um, you know, for five thousand bucks a year, uh, less income, if, that's a small price to pay if this ensures that we can get a bare-bones infrastructure system around the lake.
Sewer system.
Sewer, septic system, sewer system around the lake, so, you know, with great reservations, I think I would lean toward support and a letter of support, um, if it was tied into our mission statement, as David talked about. So you're gonna draft that up, Brian, or do, I don't think we need to make a motion.
I was just gonna ask you that question, David, are you gonna draft that up, David?
Here's the chair this year, I'll, I'll be happy to review it.
Can we be like the Supreme Court and have dissenting opinions?
Do you wanna motion?
Minority report.
To do the letter of support, or, or not?
Uh, yeah, I think we should, um, I think we should have, have a motion, uh, one way or the other, so we have a clear, I mean, I don't wanna be writing a letter of support if we don't have at least three of us voting that we, uh, we do that.
So I will make the motion. Uh, I'll make a motion that we provide a, uh, limited letter of support for the continuation of the urban renewal district, um, within the context of, uh, how their proj, how their sewer improvement project will, uh, benefit and align with our mission as, as the Devil's Lake Water Improvement District, and our goals of, uh, ultimately being able to connect, uh, and sewer around the lake, so...
I'll second that motion. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No.
I think it carries three to two. So, the letter, Paul, did you say, or is it here, is it stated here somewhere that there's a hearing, like on this 27th?
I think that's correct.
So, I think they want the letter before that. Okay, well, I think we can, I'll put something together. I'm going to run it by, just run it by David.
Okay.
And, I'll run it by everybody, if I'll run it by everybody on the board. And then, Paul, I, and I'll ask you to put it on, I don't think you'll violate your ethics rules by putting this on district letterhead. And we'll do that, and we'll try to, we will get it done before the hearing, whatever date that is, which we think is the 27th. All right? Next, we have the review of the auditor.
So, you were provided a digital copy, and followed up by paper copy here tonight of that document. It's on the website here, it's on the meetings page. It's in the budget section, review ending 2013-06-03. And it'll download for people who want to see it at home. You know, as part of your last, or, yeah, your last contract for these reviews, formerly audits, is what you used to get. You're not paying for the auditor's presence here for these, to bring this information to you. So, I'm, you know, willing to go through it to whatever extent you would prefer, and provide as much information that I can about it. You know, that's kind of up to you.
I think it came out fairly clean, so I didn't really have much, any questions on it, so.
I believe this ends, and I have to double-check the, another three-year contract with this accountant, so we'll potentially be looking at putting this out for bid again in the coming, you know, year.
We have one more year on it, but...
I think we may be out. I have to double-check on that. It...
Time goes fast.
Things go fast, yeah.
Yeah.
So, Paul, I don't have any problems with this at all. Just was curious what the debt service is.
Debt service is...
I know what a debt service is, but I'm what was...
What we have currently is, we have none, so we aren't servicing any debt.
Okay, because I thought there was a $30,000 entry for debt services.
In the budget, there is, yes.
Okay, in the budget, there is.
Yep.
That was it.
Glad I could answer the question. Like I said, the theme seems to be that I'm not a financial expert. It seems like the theme of this meeting, like, and it's good that we have the auditors and payroll specialists doing these other roles, and, you know, anyhow. But we do have a large section of this, and, which was double-checked by the auditor as far as the numbers go, which is our management discussion and analysis, which is pages two through eight. So, that's your managers' work into that audit for the year, the review.
Yeah, I was hunting for the question I thought I had, but it got answered. And I thought it was really well-done. I like this review process. The section on economic factors and forecasted finances, really well-done.
Thank you. I'll take credit for that, that's my part. One interesting note, just as a sidebar, is for people that are reviewing past audits, the one major change from this is the words, instead of total net assets, you'll see throughout this document, total net position, and that's new language in accounting world to look at particularly nonprofits and governments, and how they express things. Instead of total net assets, it's called total net position. So, if you're looking for, you know, comparing those previous audits, that would be the one update in the nomenclature.
Okay, so, any further discussion about the review? Investment policy? I think we've already...
Yep.
...resolved that.
Yep.
Budget officer?
Pardon your... Motion that we appoint our lake manager as the budget officer for fiscal year 2014?
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for that.
Motion carries. You want to talk about the budget calendar?
Sure. As proposed here, we'd have our meeting, budget meeting, which is a major kind of thing to get on the calendar, May 9th, which is the Friday after our May monthly meeting. So, we have, May 8th is the Thursday night, and then the Friday between, starting at, say, 10 o'clock again, would be, is the proposed one. This meeting venue is available for that. I've checked into that. So, that's what's proposed. If there's a better date or some other schedule that we want to look at, be time to try to set that up, and maybe we could bring it back for February's meeting. But I think, you know, if you all can be there, then that's nearly a quorum of the budget committee. So, then it's just a matter of, I'm not sure, Don, are you still on the budget? He's left.
Apparently not.
That date's fine. I would ask, is June lined up with the June meeting as well, then?
Yes.
Being it's on the 12th?
Yeah, so...
The year's available?
What's that?
And this facility's available?
Yeah, because it's our regular meeting. That would be the hearing. June 12th would be the budget hearing, which is part of the evening meetings.
All right.
Regular meeting.
What were those dates again?
May 9th would be the one to have, and that's the Friday after your Thursday night, your second Thursday night meeting.
All right.
Any issues?
No.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget calendar as defined in the staff, whatever, staff report for the 2014, 2015 budget.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Yeah, so this, as I was putting together the meeting packet, I got an email reminder about this special districts conference, which is February 6th, 7th, and 8th, and 9th. Really, the 6th is a pre-board, or kind of a training day, and then the regular meeting is the 7th and 8th, and the 9th. It's a weekend, over a weekend. I went to one, found it, you know, very informative. I mean, there's this, as you know, there's, just with the amount of stuff that we went through with policy tonight, you can imagine how much other stuff there is as running a district. It's a bit overwhelming, frankly, and I found this very informative. It's also, you know, not as certainly as interesting as attending other things, and doesn't make sewers come around the lake any faster, you know, that kind of stuff. And so, you know, I reflect on that when I'm looking at any time that, you know, spending on anything, you know, about what the objectives are, and, you know, are we actually getting that? But when you're actually running a district, in order to run a district, you got to have informed staff and board members. So, you know, I found that it was a pretty informative meeting. I would recommend that a board member go if they're interested, or send staff.
Question?
Sure.
Board dues responsibilities and liabilities, is that the same training that we get?
It's typically, yeah, it's going to be updated, you know, it's going to be, you know, if there's something new, you know. One thing that special districts does is prevent, provide like a legislative update, so if there's been changes that's happened in legislation, or, but for the most part, it's, you know, it's pretty core stuff, you know.
And as a member, do we still have one day, one training day a year that we can...
I believe we have eight hours, yeah, of time that we can ask special districts to come and provide trainings.
Yeah. Personally, I think, you know, if I was looking at it from a, you know, what would we get the most out of it if we had, you know, maybe if we did the board training and had them come down here, that would, I mean, that would be the one thing I would be interested in. And I, you know, it's already included in what our participation in that. So, I mean, I would like to see us do that, if we're, you know, if anybody's interested in doing that. I think we've all taken it before, but if we wanted a refresher. Other than that, I think it'd be fine for Paul to go, or anybody else who wants to.
I agree.
Is it, did we adopt the policy so he can just go now? He's got the travel policy and everything plays, right?
If we're in that, if we got through that one or not.
So, I guess I'll make a motion that, you know, that Paul can go, spend 620 bucks and go.
Second? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
How long has it been since we had our last SDO workshop here? Is it two or three years? At least two.
At least two, yeah.
I think we should find a time in the spring that...
You know, it was George Dunkle that came down. I think it was very informative. I learned a lot, and I think that the people that were able to attend it. So, I think if, we should look at, it sounds like we should look at having...
I think it'd be a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, that's really valuable. No matter how long you've been at this, it's always helpful.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe three or four hours, not eight.
Right, yeah. We could ask for some, for giving the bridge version or something. Yeah, and, you know, maybe we could tie it with other trainings that they offer. Maybe it's CPR training or something, you know, that they have, and maybe there's some, make a full day of something like that, and if people can come to either war or something, that might be good. Because that's another thing that, you know, when you get a look at a policy development, such, these are things that we can have access to some of these dollars and some training for such things, probably take advantage of it.
So, if we did take advantage of a CPR session, they give you a card, that sort of thing?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah. I've had one training. It's been four years ago, at least, though.
I'd be really interested.
You know, and really should be getting, I think they've gone to like a two-year cycle. It used to be one and three. It used to be like first aid and CPR every three or something. I think, if I remember, it's like every two-year to have both, I think is what the modern kind of recommendation is. But David, do you know?
I think they've gone to like this hands, you know, hands-only CPR.
That's true, too, yeah. Certainly since...
But I don't know how long it takes to get a certification. It can't be that much, because you're not doing, you know, it's...
It's at least a half a day.
Is it?
Yeah, yeah. We can look into it and see if we can bring it forward, and maybe partner up with the fire department or other districts that they're serving and get, you know, and same with the board training. In fact, maybe I should ask you that right now. One of the things that they've talked about before is when they come to do trainings, if they're, you know, if there's maybe another special district, road district or something that could come in, they could help facilitate, you know, shared time kind of thing, and I'm wondering if that would be appropriate, or if you'd want exclusive rights to the...
I don't have a problem taking advantage of what other districts come in and learn the same things that we are.
Okay. Just efficiency for them, and, you know, as your insurance provider, you know, keeps their rates down for their costs, too, so. Okay, we'll look into that.
Okay. Non-agenda items. We got any non-agenda items?
I do, and I forgot to, I wanted to make one comment. I would like, in the, you know, the policies that we do establish, at least one month every year, that we, you know, give you the opportunity to, executive session on what's working well, and, you know, just kind of get some direct feedback from the board. Because I realize it's been a while since we've done that. As I was getting ready to come here, and I was reading through that, through some of that stuff, so, you know, whatever you're comfortable with, I'd like to at least have something set on the calendar so that we don't kind of forget and do it at the last minute when we're trying to negotiate contracts and stuff like that. And I think it would be good, you know, mid-year, in between the contract establishment at the end of the fiscal year, and, you know.
Yeah, you know, that's, it's actually, makes more sense from, you know, budget perspective to have that information, too. So, like, if, you know, there's this desire coming from the board to limit salary or what have you, then that's given, and you can kind of give that feedback, and it's, so, yeah, we could look at that, and...
Because I always find us falling behind in doing that, you know.
Yeah, it's actually, it's in your, you do have a policy existing, and it just calls for, well, I'll look at the language wrong, but it's certainly annual. It calls for annually, and I don't know if it calls for it, you know, certainly before the last meeting of the year, which is where it ends up, like you said.
Yeah. Because it always seems like it's at the last possible minute, and there's things that the budget can benefit from having those discussions earlier in the year, so.
Okay.
I've got something kind of like to segue in on that. You know, we were talking earlier tonight about freeing you up so you had more time regarding the accounting procedures. And we've always had, I'm probably still a minority in this, but, you know, things change. I've always thought having that virtual hourly report, daily report from Paul is being unproductive and taking a lot of time. It almost conveys a, I don't know, I mean, I think we're an extraordinary, it's extraordinary, it's an extraordinary thing to do, and I think few managers actually do that. I think, frankly, I have enough trust that I, I don't mean to make you uncomfortable, Paul, but I believe he's being productive, and would like him to take that additional time to focus to get our goals done, other than crowding up his day with that. And so, just, I don't expect to prevail, but just the authority report.
I'll give you my opinion on it. You know, we've always just said, make it short and sweet, a couple bullets. And I just, it's not that I want to check up on Paul, or that I, you know, it's not about trying to prove that he's doing something. It's, if we, you know, I'll look at something, and I'll see that he's having something that I'm interested in, and having that discussion, and I might reach out to Paul. And I do, quite often. Say, "Hey, what was going on with that meeting?" Because I was interested in it. And I provide an input, and we, you know, we'll have little sessions, and if I didn't have kind of insight into some of that, it wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't have that same interaction, right? Wouldn't have that. That being said, it could be once a week, you know, just to kind of, you know, a little brief overview is cool by me. I just, that's what I use it for, right?
And that overview once a week would be nice, you know, just, "Hey, guys, this is what we're doing, just keeping you posted." this is what we're doing, just keeping you posted.
Yeah.
It's just that hour-by-hour thing, to me, feels community.
Well, that's Paul on himself, because I've, I've never asked by hour-by-hours just to give me a little bullet list of, of the highlights. I don't need to know that he spent an hour, you know, 30 minutes between 11 and 12 at lunch, right? But it's just, it's just topic-driven for me, because I'm interested in what's going on.
It's felt to me like a little bit of a, like a leg bracelet we've got on.
I think what we're looking for, what we've always talked about is, you know, highlight your day, and as you do, expound on those things that really matter to the board. That's the stuff we're really interested in, you know, what's, what was the conversation you have with the fishing game guy? What was, you know, that's the stuff that we want to be up, kept up to date on, is, you know, not so much as we talk.
Yeah, I trust that Paul is being productive, to a point. I do, I, I trust that he's being productive. I just want to-
Trust to a point, or that he's being productive, too?
You guys could, you know, you could throw me a little bone and agree with me.
Yeah, I threw you a bone, didn't I? But, no, I, I'm fine with once a week. I just, you know, I like to be able to, you know, I don't want to have to call Paul and say, Paul, what have you been doing? Because it takes him out. It takes just as much time for Paul to say, here's, here's some of the cool things that have been going on this week, as it does for him to do one little quick hit and pop it off to all of us, right? Yeah. I just try and be active during the month, and, and that's my way of making sure I don't waste Paul's time, you know.
How long does it take you to do that?
Well, you know, typically it's 15 minutes a day, you know, to do a kind of a, kind of review. Um, if it was once a week, it, you know, might take a half an hour, you know, or something. You know, and, and sometimes it might take 10 minutes, because, you know, it's really like, still moving, you know, in fact, or, you know, you know, if it's not like too, uh, varied of a week, you know, I guess would be the terminology, certainly everything. But, yeah, you know, a, a daily thing takes a good 15 minutes, and, you know, when you add that up, and, and this is something we've talked about, you know, when we looked at this years ago, it was like, um, I, I believe the number is seven days. So, when you, when you look at time, and, and overall, if you spend 15 minutes a day doing any one thing during your work week, you're using seven working days.
Per year.
Per year. So, that's a, that's a week, you know, that's a lot of time. But, you know, the, but that, maybe that's really well-spent, and that's the, that's the question, you know, it's like, because, you know, it's, it's information to the board, it's direct communications, you know, you might spend seven days a, a year's direct communicating to someone else too, you know, so, because you got a phone call. But, so, it is, it was the number that sticks in my mind. I believe it's seven days, because, you know, inside of a month, you've used, you know-
I'm fine with it. I'm, I'm fine if we want to, if you guys are cool with doing, you know, just a Friday kind of little splat to us, the highlights for the week. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I like that too. Highlights, what you think is important, you know, would be, yeah.
That, that's where it was years ago, and then it morphed into the daily, um, so, we could go back to that and see how that goes, if people are comfortable with that, and, um-
Well, Seth did those too, right?
He, he did, uh, he would send them to me and copy you all.
I always looked at that, and I, I wasn't, I guess, here on, uh, at the beginning of when, when it started, but I always thought that was some kind of an efficiency, a report, to make sure that Seth was doing something that amounted to something. Because I've done that myself years ago in another life, you know, and it does.
Is that he was doing something, or that he was?
He was always doing something.
Okay, so we'll go to a weekly, sounds like, uh, and-
It's just highlights, it's what you think is important that, you know, that we might be interested in.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. We still have board comments, or are we there yet?
I've, I've got a, a non-agenda item, if I could, really quickly.
Yeah, non-agenda item. Non-agenda items.
Um, I wanted to put July 19th as the, as the prospective day for the Devils Lake Revival. Uh, I got a call from, uh, it's a Jack Coop, I don't remember his last name, and we're, I'm trying to pin down a day to move forward with on the revival, so that he can get some planning done. Um, July-
Anything earlier?
Anything earlier? Well, um, oh, yeah, there is, but, um, uh-
That was like the one weekend I was gonna do something.
Oh, you are a planner.
I was like, literally, the one weekend that I wanted to go do something.
Oh, well, I don't want to get in the way of that, because we need captains.
But I, I can do it on Sunday, too.
Okay. Well, it's, it's the third Saturday of July, um, you know, I think that it was a, it was the third Saturday last year. We kept it away from the 4th of July weekend. There was concern about going too early in the season, certain concerns about going too late in the season, so, um, I don't know.
Who contacted you about?
The Dragon Boats.
Dragon Boats, yeah.
If he can coordinate to that weekend, um, unless we can, he can do it, and it's free, it's only one day, yeah. Let's just do that, unless anybody else has an issue.
I have not planned to be on next Wednesday, so, anything. Just a joke. I don't plan far ahead usually.
Well, I didn't plan this, it just happened to be an event to go to on that one.
Okay, cool. We'll, we'll put it on the calendar.
I'm not saying I'll be here, I'm just saying I have a plan.
Right. We'll, we'll shoot for that date, and I'll start just some of the beginning workings to secure that date, so that, uh-
Unless the 12th is better for him.
Okay, well, you know, I mean, it, the 12th may be a better day. I, um, you know, I just looked at the city's calendar, and the, the third weekend didn't have anything major. I mean, we can pull it up and take a quick calendar, too. I mean, it's the VCB website. Um-
Okay.
Want to do that real quick? Two minutes.
Do you know if Jack can do it?
I don't know what his preference, yeah, um, he just wanted to-
I think that that would be a really big, you know, nice thing to do, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that Dragon Boat.
So, if it's a matter of having the Dragon Boats, I, that's the 19th, we'll, we'll, I'll do, we'll work it, we'll make it work.
Okay, so, July, uh, the 12th, summer, summer members' show at Lincoln City Cultural Center, not a big conflict. Uh- Yeah, doesn't look like much of anything, that, the Saturday bef- the second or the third Saturday. Um, and even, you know, yeah.
Do we wish one, if he can do both, the 12th would be better, for, yeah, I like it a little bit earlier in the season there.
The kite festival's the 28th and 29th, June.
Yeah, we don't, no. Keep with that, so.
Maybe have, I, maybe have a problem with a week later, other than your desire to have it early?
A week later, I'm out of, I'm out of town for two weeks, so.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make it work on the 19th, if the 19th is, is what he has available, because I want to see that happen as part of it.
Alright, well-
Does anybody have a problem with the 12th, if the 12th is available? Just speak up now, okay. If he can deal with the 12th, do the 12th, otherwise the 19th.
Okay.
Great, good. I'm glad that he's, uh, he's going for it.
Yeah, yeah. Be good to have a demonstration, you know, 10 teams even, that's a big event to me.
Seems like a lot.
Seems like a real, uh-
It seems like an event, more-
Yeah, I know, so, you know, um, power to him. Um, okay, great, and that's, that's all I've got for new business, thank you.
One thing that's really, that is good about the 12th is, those of us who, who make it a point to be in town the second Thursday for the meetings, that the second Thursday's obviously going to be the 10th.
Yeah.
So, you know.
Yeah, that does.
I try to hang around here definitely in the summertime anyway, but, yeah.
Good, good point.
So, but, whatever it takes to get the Dragon Boats down here, basically, is the relevant, right? Okay, I keep-
You haven't heard from, um, Debbie, or Slidger, about the-
Missed in this?
Not about Dragon Boats, but on other stuff just recently, yeah.
Has he come up with any, for instance, are they coming back with their week?
Uh, in fact, that's what it was about today. Um, I believe the date has been set, and there's, I found a Facebook post is what happened, it kind of set the ball rolling, and I, and I copied a few people on it, and, uh, so, there's some clarifying thing about who's all involved with that, but I believe the date has been set, you know, as far as the, the people putting on the Devils Lake Dash. Um, so, yeah, it's, uh, I don't have it off the top of my head, but it's May 2nd or 3rd weekend, probably.
So, it'd be like the 17th, maybe, huh?
Yeah. Be a good thing to, to be getting up on the calendar. Maybe it's on this calendar, too. I mean, that's just that they've been, um- Devils Lake Dash, May 10th and 11th, is what's showing here, 2014. May 10th and 11th. It's on the VCB's page. And this, this is, yeah, and then this is their Facebook page that the Devils Lake Dash folks have. Um, so.
Good.
Yeah.
So.
Additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items? Well, you guys are citizens, you got any comments on that? Rick, you're a citizen, huh?
I'd make just an announcement or a comment again, just that, you know, the Devils Lake Water and Pruma District is now at the Oregon Coast Community College. Uh, it's working out really good. We've got a great space there. Come down and see us. Uh, come into the main entrance, hang a left down the hallway, go all the way down to the end of the hallway, and that's where we're at. We've got the two offices down there, and then you might also find us up in the lab. So, we have shared use of the lavatory upstairs, so, um, it's a great space. Um, I think we're gonna hope to do a kind of open house sometime, maybe in February, uh, welcome the public in, and, and, uh, hope that you all could come down and, and be part of that, too, so. Uh, but, you know, any and all are welcome, just come on down, check out the community college and our, and our new, our new digs down there.
Great. Board comments and announcements?
I have something. February 8th, um, at the Eventuary, there's a, uh, a Taste of Lincoln City event going on. What that is, is a product of the Beach Bark, and it's called the Beach Bite. Uh, for those that don't know, the Beach Bark is a local organization that is sponsored by the Humane Society. You're a person without means in Lincoln City, and you have an app. Uh, you can take them to either vet and write the check. Um, this February 8th, from 4:00 to 7:00, Taste of Lincoln City will have, um, Lincoln City's best restaurants, and I'm gonna name them. Uh, and this is, might forget somebody, because it's just off the top of my head, but you'll be able to buy your ticket, and then come in and taste all these different foods, and they'll be foods from, our participants are Salashan, uh, The Bay House, Side Door Cafe, Blackfish Cafe, The Mist, Roadhouse 101, Bill and Vivian's Barbecue, Mojo Coffee, Captain Dan's Private Pasty, My Sweet Petite, Dory Cove, Both Casino Restaurants, Mo's, Oregon Coast Catering, Nelskot Cafe, Wildflower Cafe, Mohimi's, and the Anchor, Historic Anchor Inn. So, um, what a value for 35 bucks and food from all these guys. So, uh, um, we need volunteers, and we need to sell tickets, uh, so you can contact me at the Anchor. Thank you.
And I'll bet you that Kip's not making a dime on this, he's donating the-
Absolutely. By the way, this is a rare charity, and the, not 97% goes to it, but 100% goes, so, this is all out of the kindness.
But this wasn't an advertising segment for Kip's benefit.
No, no, it wasn't. For the dogs, Ben. For the animals, cats, too. Actually, if you brought in a gerbil, we would treat you, so.
What about a goldfish?
Yeah, anything. If you love it, we'll fix it.
Alright, thank you, Kip. Uh, any other?
Yeah, I had a comment. Um, I wanted to compliment Paul on his e-newsletter a couple weeks ago. I thought it was probably the best one that's ever been published. Um, that was quite an interesting, uh, little article on the, um, winter solstice, uh, but where I really was intrigued was, um, dealing with water freezing and dropping to the, as, when water gets down to that zero or four degrees Celsius, which is 39 degrees, how it drops to bottom of the lake, but yet the water that cools on the surface after that is less dense in its state on top, hence the freezing. I thought that was quite interesting, and, that also explains why, you know, we have a thermometer off our dock, and, um, explains why I never seem to see it go below 38 or 39. That's, uh, the probe's a couple, three feet in the water. And since we did see the, uh, you know, the ice coming up around the corner from our gutter grounds, and we noticed, you know, there's ice forming up by Knolls there, um, so we knew the top of the water was definitely getting, getting pretty cold. Another, another thing that tied into that, too, was, um, about a week after that cold snap, um, we've, we've seen, um, blue green algae still in the lake, you know, all through this winter, which is, you know, the latest I've ever seen it, that I can remember. And, even after that cold snap, we had a light east wind day, which blows the water surface toward us, and in the summer, when we have a light east wind day, in the mornings, we get up and, you know, it's all piled up next to our property, and, uh, it's pretty ugly at that point. But even after that cold snap, we had some surface algae, not just in the water column, and it's like, you know, it would, it just, I guess it, um, just, uh, made it even more, solidified in my mind that, you know, blue green algae is driven so much by sunlight, not so much by temperature and other factors, because since we've had so much sunlight this year, it's been a lot less cloudy than it seems to have been. We've had a lot less rain, it's been a much drier year. But to see that stuff still survive at that type of water temperature, you know, so, anyway, I just thought the article was really good. It kind of tied into what I was watching in the lake, and, you know, it was, um, just seems fairly interesting about how algae's still hanging around. But maybe this rain bash we'll get this week will help flush the remnants of it out, so.
Yeah, I mean, I remember seeing the same thing. It was surprisingly thick.
Yeah.
Well, a lot, two doors down, so.
For December and January, I mean, yeah, pretty crazy.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Oh, that gavel's here for a reason, right?